And did I see Dan Hessler onboard?
I don't see him. I don't see Dan. I don't see Pete either.
Did you get audio?
Tell me what I can.
I don't know.
We can hear you, Gary.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Lisa, can you hear me?
I can, yeah.
We can hear, we can hear you.
Okay, it looks like it's five o'clock. We'll go ahead and get this meeting started. Hopefully Dan Hessler will chime in here in a moment. I did email him yesterday and didn't get a response, so I like to think that he's, he is around. So this is, let me go ahead and get the meeting kicked off here. Today is the 26th of April 2021. This is the Town of Ledyard Permanent Municipal Building Committee Special Meeting being held via Zoom. My name is Steve Jaskowicz. I am the Chair of the PMBC. This meeting is being held by Zoom and I call this meeting to order. It's 5:01. First item we have is a roll call, so I'll start with myself, Steve Jaskowicz, Chair.
John Marshall, Tom Nelson.
George Tversky, member.
Gary Snyder, member.
Kate Tappama Herb, Board of Ed Rep and Member.
Wayne Donaldson, Ledyard Public Schools.
And I am Dean Petroselli with Silver Petroselli Architects Engineers covering for Mr. Steve June this evening.
Okay, I did hear Mr. Hosey state that he was present. Our agenda today doesn't have a, when we have a special meeting, we normally don't have citizens' comments in there. I just want to let you know that in case you were looking for it.
Also, excuse me, Steve, there's also, I believe, someone else, or that might be you. John, what number are you? Who's 967?
Wait, George Hosey.
George Hosey. So who's 9130?
No, that's me.
That you, John? Okay. I just wanted to make sure I got everybody. Thank you.
You betcha.
Okay, with that, the first item on our agenda is Roman numeral number four. This is a motion to approve the minutes of 12 April 2021. Those meetings are available on the Town Portal. And I will entertain motions to approve those meeting minutes.
I'll make that, Marshall.
Hey, motion's been made by Mr. Tyminski to approve the meeting minutes for our 12 April 2021 special meeting. Is there a second?
Gary Snyder, second.
Go ahead.
Okay, that has been seconded.
Just sort of minutes, it says on the, at least it said the minutes are April 12th. Motion to approve minutes of April 12th.
12, correct.
That was our special meeting. And in that meeting, we actually weren't able to take any substantive action because we did not have a quorum.
That's the 21st. Let's say that's, okay.
So with that, the motion's been seconded. Is there any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the minutes of 12 April 2021, signified by saying your name and I, Steve Jaskowicz, I.
Hearing Tyminski, I.
Hunter, I.
Kate Tappama Herb, I.
With that, the eyes have it and the minutes are approved. All right, rolling back to our agenda for tonight. The next thing we have is a Ledyard School Improvement Project General Discussion. And we have, what I'd like to do in case Dan Hessler comes onboard is take care of Roman numeral 52 first. The discussion of possible action on closeout and preparation for audit. And Lisa, since you have a better view than me, if you happen to see
Dan.
Dan Hessler pop in, let me know. So I'm just going to do number two before number one. As far as the audit goes, I sent to Lisa for passing out to all of you a, a draft copy of the request for proposal that we discussed at our last meeting, which is for a firm to assist us with the closeout and preparations for the state audit. As just as a general background reminder, you know, that audit by the state may not occur for another four or five years. There is a good likelihood that key members of the committee may leave the committee or move on, move out of town. You know, God forbid, people could pass away and things like that. So making sure that the mountain of paperwork that is needed to support the audit by the state is, is in a package that is palatable and easily given to the state is very important. I think by, by doing that, we should be able to shorten the amount of time that we have. The holdback by the state, the 11% retention. And if we present that to the state in a nice neat package, I think we'll get our audit done a lot quicker. So what I asked the committee to do is to review the documents that's been sent out to you. We'll formally review that document as a committee, as part of our first meeting in the month of May. Once the committee concurs with that request for proposal and qualifications, we'll go ahead and send that off to the town to fill in the blanks, to make sure we have all the insurance numbers correct and everything. We'll set reasonable dates in there and we'll get that published so that we can get bids on that. You'll see inside the draft document that went out, there's a lot of, we'll see a row of Xs. There's still some data that needs to be filled in, but it's not substantive, you know, other than the the number of change orders and things like that in the project that I'm getting from ONG to tighten that up to be able to send that off. I don't have an estimated cost on what that's going to cost us. We're not obligated to make any kind of a, as you read through there, any kind of award. So I think that that draft RFP, once it meets the hurdles from finance, to make sure that we meet all the town's purchasing requirements, we'll be able to get that on the street probably a few weeks after we approve it as a committee. And then I think the 30 days to get the proposals back and we'll be able to take a look at that. Does anybody have any questions about that before I just move on? We have nothing to vote on.
Do we know of anybody, Steve, or does anybody know of anybody that does this stuff?
There are a few firms. I did ask around a little bit about firms that do this type of work. And also, when I spoke with Wayne Donaldson, he had indicated that he knew of some folks. You know, Wayne made it clear from a previous Board of Ed, the problem they had where they kind of let everything sit on the shelf for years and when the state called up and said, hey, you gotta do, you know, we gotta do this audit and, you know, they scrambled to try to put it all together. It took them a long time and it's very difficult. So while things are still fresh in people's minds as to where, you know, what folders are where in the town's websites and things like that, we'll be able to put this together with some help. It is a big task that is beyond the volunteers in this committee to be able to do. And the more important thing is that we're going to involve some firms that have done numerous closeouts with the state and they know what the state wants, how the state wants it, so that we can cut months, if not years, off the time it takes the state to do our audit, so we can get our final reimbursements in. So I think that's a that's a win for us. I'm hoping that we'll get three or four bids on this, if not more. But there are a limited number of companies that do this type of work within the state. We may get some CPA kind of firms, but realistically, what we want are organizations that, that run school projects for, for towns to be able to help us with the closeout. Any other questions? Okay, if, if there are or no other questions, we're going to move on. Wayne, I'm going to turn over to you and let you give us an update on what work has been accomplished in, in the schools under the School Improvement Project. So if you'll start out with just discussing how we're doing at continuing to whittle down the punch list. You know, we were, we made some good progress when we last met. And you know, specifically, you know, pick either school to start, but the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll start with the middle school. Again, in the actual core punch list items, really nothing reported to me from ONG that they've completed that I can go look at. During why we were researching some of the issues with the BMS system, with the amount of alarms we were getting, we stumbled across another problem where there is a electrical mode E and mode D, which are for monitoring of the demand and the electricity at the middle school. There's multiple units and various electrical rooms. The ones in the attic space were powered, but were never set up and programmed. The ones on the first floor electrical room, one of that, one set of those has no circuit breakers installed for them. The other set does have circuit breakers, but they're powered off because there's a note next to them saying that it needs a three pole breaker instead of three single pole breakers that are feeding it. So that's over to ONG. They're still working on the radon system. We still have not received any of the training videos for the training that they did, but I don't know what that encompasses. But a lot of the things running across, there was no training provided to us on those. They just have a lot of training to do, I believe. We're still not seeing any progress on the access ladders or the access ladders to the hatch on the roof. Those are still on hold. We still continue to have problems with ceiling tiles falling out. And we're still having the no progress on the leaks on the ceilings. They still tend to think are going back through the HVAC system, the rooftop units. The roofer has been out multiple times, has not been able to find anything. So basically, status quo with middle school. Any questions on that?
Wayne, in our last meeting, they had indicated that 20 of the 47 remaining punch list items were cleared, I believe, in the middle school. And what you're saying is in the last two weeks, they have not, since we last met, they have not come back and given you anything for, that they have stated is, is complete. Have they had trades in the school during the last two weeks?
They had the electrician in there doing, that I'm aware of, that they let me know he was going to be in there to wire up the radon system. But that is the only one that they've reported to me that was in there.
In the middle school?
In the middle school.
Okay, we'll talk about Gallup Hill here in a moment. We still don't have ONG with us tonight, is that correct?
I don't see them.
Yeah, I'm looking to, okay. All right, Wayne, the, what was the final resolution on the ceiling tile issue that we had before? The, the ceiling tile guy came out and I know that he made some excuses that we didn't seem to think were, were good solutions. The, we're not, what, one of the things I still don't understand is why they're just not cutting those tiles larger for more overhang. I mean, they're not at the maximum distance of those tiles already, are they?
No, no, they're just, it's all cut tiles, so they have room to recut them. I, I don't know either. They're, you know, they just claim that it's the, they should never have designed that narrow line grid for a school. But it's all the cut tiles that are falling out. So if they cut them a little longer, they said they were in specification. I don't believe they were in specification, they wouldn't be falling out.
Wayne, how many tiles are we talking about?
Probably 20 or 30, you know, but they're in each, they're in the corners in the rooms. Almost every half the room.
My question out of that is we've been chasing this thing for weeks. I mean, can we, can you just have somebody cut them and we backcharge ONG for these?
Yeah, I can have somebody cut them.
I, I mean, we're, it doesn't seem like ONG or the contractor wants to move on this. I don't know if we're holding any money back on them. But we ought to find out if we're holding money, cut them and not pay them for it or something.
I am fine with that. We can work over a couple of weeks and do them. I mean, it's not a huge amount.
If we're holding any money.
In, in, in this case here, the, even if, you know, the ceiling tiles cost, I think about $10 apiece, if I, if I recall. And my concern is if, if those tiles are falling out in the corners, number one, you know, obviously we want to consider just removing the tiles in the corners until the vendor rectifies that so that they don't fall down on a student or something like that or.
But it doesn't look like he has any indication they're going to rectify. We've been kicking this around for weeks.
Yeah, we don't have, we don't have Dan online from ONG for some reason, but what I will say this much, Gary, is that I, I agree with you and I know they have Conacoustics money that has not been paid to them yet. But in this particular case, we, we're going to figure out a resolution on these things. This is a minor, I'm going to call it almost semi cosmetic. Dean Petroselli's online from Silver Petroselli, the architect. I know you normally don't attend these meetings, so it's nice to see you, Dean. We normally have one of your architects attend. Who's our project manager, Steve June. Have you had problems with recurring problems with ceiling tiles just not being fitted properly in other schools?
Well, I can tell you that we specify narrow line in, in hundreds of our projects. I sit in my own office below a narrow line tile and we don't have any reoccurring issues of ceiling tiles falling. So I think you folks understand how the system works. It's a, it's a grid that's a set dimension. In other words, the grid can't be installed incorrectly because it's a standardized two by two punch grid. So the primaries and secondaries are what they are. If ceiling tiles are falling, there's only one reason, and that's because the tiles were cut too short. So yes, we have seen it, Steve, but it's not a condition that we see often. And anytime that we see it, it's simply because a few tiles have been cut short and you throw those tiles away and you recut them and I never see the problem again. So I can't say, we've never not seen it because I have, but it is not a common problem. And when it is a an issue, the contractor simply corrects it by, by cutting a new tile. So it's not rocket science. If they're falling, then they're not the right size. There's, there's plenty of grid to support the tile on all four sides. So the fact that it's a standard grid versus a narrow line is irrelevant. They just were sloppy cutting the tiles and they need to recut them.
Thank you.
Yeah, I've been, I've been hearing about this myself. While I don't attend every meeting, obviously, Steve fills me in and I'm CC'd on every email that's ever occurred on this project, so I have been seeing it. I would say we give Dan one last ultimatum and say, if it's not corrected by X date and you can pick a date as a committee, then you're going to follow your AIA opportunity, your contractual opportunity to hire a third party and then withhold retainage or payment to ONG accordingly. You surely have that right. But as the architect, I would recommend at least you put it in writing to Dan or to ONG and give them a date that they need to correct, or you're going to be seeking third party support.
Thanks, Dean. And on this one here, you know, I almost, I almost would be, you know, half satisfied if they, if they dropped a pallet of ceiling tiles off and at least at that point there, we're only cutting them and sticking them in where we have a problem as opposed to you know, having to buy them and do the labor. We'll figure this out as we move forward again.
We followed up, we followed up with ONG this, this, over the last two weeks too, and Dan reassured, he reassured us, SPNA, that not only the ceiling tiles, but the rest of the punch list would be complete by the end of April. So it's just hard for you to hear from Wayne that there's only been one electrician out there. Obviously, they're not making this a high priority to wrap up when they promised us and you that they would.
I appreciate that, Dean, and I do know from talking to Steve, he did tell me that he keeps you, you and the other principals involved as to what's going on in the projects and, and I appreciate that. The, and one thing I just also want to ask Wayne about, where you've got some, you said ceiling leaks, roof leaks rather. You have the roofers been responsive? I presume that you called them director. Do you still go back to ONG on the, when you talk to the roofers?
I went through ONG because up to the point, the last point where we knew it was a, or suspected it was a roof leak, they hadn't turned over any of the documentation for warranty or anything. So at this point, they were pursuing the action air because they believed it was coming in through the air handling units. So I still continue to go through them on those. If there's a new leak that shows up somewhere, we'll go through the warranty process.
Okay, and has the roofer been responsive when they come out and talk to you?
Yes. I mean, they're out within, you know, sometimes it's the same day, even though it's raining, they're out there and trying to deal with the issue.
I think they want to be out when it's raining so they can actually try to track it. It's better for them and that makes sense. All right. We, and Dean, we've been talking about trades in the middle school. The majority of our issues remain in Gallup Hill. The, all right, so let me move over now, Wayne, and let's talk about the Gallup Hill school for a moment.
Okay. Again, there hasn't been much progress in the way of on the punch list at Gallup Hill. And the, again, the electrician was in to deal with, I guess they're running some power to the vestibules, put electric heaters in instead of the angora that was issued in 2018 to rerun the sprinkler lines. That's the only thing that I am aware of that was going on there. There is questions about, there is one room, 149, that has an oddball thermostat. They claim that the, there is not enough connections into the existing system, so they had to put that as an oddball. But again, it comes back to, we didn't add rooms in the building. They bid this out as a project, so I don't understand why they didn't include that room into the calculations. And they're now saying it's going to be $20,000 to put another subunit in there. I don't understand it. We've actually taken thermostats out of rooms, so I don't understand why they can't hide that thermostat into that in place of the timeout room that had a thermostat originally. It's just down the hall. It's only like two rooms down the hall. What's going on there? With Steve June's help, ONG was saying that they did not have to install the radon system at Gallup Hill because there were, levels were not above the state requirements. With a little research on Steve June's part, apparently the contracts at the Gallup Hill and the middle school, because there were two different architects, were written differently. And Gallup Hill required an active system from day one, even before testing. So that's where we stand on that. Then the ONG has finally agreed to that and agreed to install the fans on the radon.
Hey, Wayne, I need to interrupt you for a minute. Two things. One, on the radon system. So what you're saying is we paid for the system regardless of test results. So we're getting that system installed, which, you know, obviously it has to be maintained over time, but it's better to have a system. So in three or four years from now, or whatever your next test interval is, you test. And we have to, in theory, if we have an active system, that would mean your next test would probably have less radon than it would otherwise.
Correct.
So it would prevent you from potentially having a high test in the future, which would then cause us to have to do mitigation at that point.
Correct.
All right, the second.
If I can jump in here, Steve, just the subtle difference between a passive and active system. The passive is all the infrastructure is put in, all the underslab piping and all the piping. The active system really just adds a fan to that pipe so that you draw out the negative pressure, you keep negative pressure under the slab. So it's really just installing the fan and installing the electrical and controls to that fan. So it's not a huge component between the passive and active, but Wayne is correct in that we did specify an active system that ONG had not installed. And I actually worked through this with Steve June, so I'm very familiar with this one. They are and have been informed and I believe they agreed that they owe us an active system.
Yes, the other item for Dean while you're speaking here is the, the issue on the thermostat. I know that there are some things that in the specifications are, are left to some final interpretation by, in this case, Johnson Controls or whoever's doing the, the installation of the actual instruments that measure things and control things. Would the number of thermostats, where the thermostats need to be and their connections be specified in the design? Or would that be something that is up to Johnson Controls? Well, this would be Action Air and their subcontractors.
It makes no sense of what Wayne said. We own T stats in all of the spaces that we specified. And they need to provide the backbone for us to be able to hook those T stats up to. So I don't know the specific and I will ask Dan what the specific there is, but on the surface, it doesn't make a lot of sense to us that there would be an additional charge to hook up a T stat that was contractually specified. So my gut feel is that they owe it to us and they might have had a backbone system that couldn't support one or two more T stats, but that shouldn't be your expense. That should be ONG's expense.
Thank you for that. And, and as, I want to make a comment while you're online here, Dean. I know that Marty has spent a lot of time.
A lot of, a lot of hours.
A lot of hours. And, and part of that's, I think, professional pride in proving that, hey, I designed a system that works and it was in the either installation and or, you know, configuration of that.
So you've met Marty before.
I met him at a meeting once and I saw personal pride in his work and.
A lot of, a lot of pride comes out of that engineer, absolutely.
And, and I do know that he had to design this system for this building three times, so we won't even talk about that, but, but in the end result, once he did get involved, and I think Wayne will back this up, we were able to actually, you know, dive in and realize what some of those problems were and we're on the path to resolution. We still get some hiccups, but as Wayne has said before, we're, you know, we're, we're light years in that section of the building away from where we were before. And that's, that's, that's good to hear.
Yeah, we're, we're almost there. I know there's a few last tweaks that Marty's working on, but yeah, I agree. We, we've made a lot of stride there and unfortunately we weren't satisfied or happy with what we found was the cause, but we were at least glad to have, have found it. It's unfortunate. It really came down to some sloppy craftsmanship and installation issues, but yes, you're correct, Steve. We're on, we're on the right track and we're, we're close to solving the last few tweaks that we have.
I appreciate that. And Wayne, I interrupted you in the middle of the school, so I'll turn back over to you, sir.
HVAC system or 201, which still is complaining about excessive temperatures in the room. That was the same problem during the heating season. Now that we're into a kind of a cooling, heating mode, we're still having the same problems in that room with the heating. We never were able to resolve final resolution on 148 or 149. I forget which room it was, that was too cold before we went into this cooler weather or warmer weather. So we don't know if there was a final resolution on that room. And on the heating cooling, we also have room 168, 167, which had the noise that showed up after the glycol leaks. So we're tend to think that they didn't probably hurt the system. JCI was out and their guy saying to think that it might be a problem in the speed adjustments on the pump. Because when the pump ramps up to full, they no longer get that noise in those classrooms. It's only when it's ramping down that that noise is occurring. So, and I've asked, I'm sending emails all the time to Dan and I'm just not getting any responses from him at this point. So I don't know where a lot of this stuff stands. Now I sent the email and I think on all I sent the last two weeks, I got one that says, okay, you sent over the information on those electrical sensors to Ferguson. That's the extent of the contacts I've had with ONG.
One, one thing, I have not heard from, back from Dan Hessler in the last week. He didn't indicate to me that he was going to be on vacation or anything like that, but I'm going to follow up with a phone call to him tomorrow. Dean, just one quick item. We were dealing with the next level of management for a while at ONG and Mike Brennan.
You're thinking the same thing I am, Steve.
And Dean, I'm not sure what the relationship at this point between the architect and the CMR would be on this project. But I would, I know that you deal with a lot of construction firms, a lot of projects. I would like to ask Silver Petroselli to raise the concerns and issues that you've heard at this meeting and what you've been seeing in the past to, to someone and higher up in the ONG food chain, perhaps a couple of levels up, to let them know where this, this issue continues to stand and your observations on this. And if for nothing else, how ONG is hurting themselves in this endeavor.
Yeah, like I said, you were reading my mind. I was going to propose to do that before you just asked me to do that, so I will gladly do that and at least give you and Wayne a courtesy call or email once I've done that and let you know who I've spoken to. So I'll follow up with that in the next day or two, Steve.
I appreciate that professional call.
Thank you, Dean. Supposed to deal with that lower level hallway where you have the water coming in.
Have they been able to identify even anything on that whatsoever?
Not that I know of. I've asked Joe and G multiple times and I've just gotten no responses from them at all.
Okay, are we, are we seeing that after rain? Is it, is it coming in even when it doesn't rain? What, what's your observation there?
It's coming in during, during or after rainstorms. I want to pay more attention when it rains. They haven't, we haven't, we stopped putting ceiling tiles back because as fast as we put them in, they just, you know, come back down. So we've just got a couple of garbage cans down there to collect the water as it comes in. We can see where it's staining and rusting the steel above the of the foundation wall. But we can't, supposedly they've been out, they've looked at the roof, they don't believe it's coming in from the roof and down the wall. So at this point, we're not sure exactly where it's coming in.
And that wall was in existence prior to the renovations, correct?
Yes.
And we did not have a leak then?
To our knowledge. Not that I know of. I was not here, so I can't necessarily say. I will gladly check with the custodians and stuff that were there and ask them. But I believe that area was a storage room, an outdoor storage room originally.
Yeah, that section was, was repurposed. And I don't know if we made grading changes or what outside there that caused this particular problem, because where we made other changes like that and things, we were able to, like I said, this, this problem may actually be easier to solve than it seems, but this, this particular issue is one of the ones that annoys me the most. Because, you know, we've continued to have this problem down there and they really have not been able to figure out what's going on. And, and this is one of those things where depending on what work was done, I realize that ONG, and I don't give them an excuse on this, but I think they're looking at it and saying, well, which trade do I point to? Which trade is responsible for this? I don't really care as, as an owner. I just want the problem fixed. So I appreciate that. Do you have anything else to mention on the middle school? I want to follow up with what Dean said earlier, and, and Wayne, I think you and I were both on the same call or the same email chain where ONG had indicated that they anticipated being able to get through all the punch list items with the exception of potentially some roof issues. And, you know, some lingering HVAC issues, you know, all the stuff we're talking about door closers and all that kind of stuff. Were actually door holder opens, is probably a better term. Were those doors all corrected in the Gallup Hill School as expected?
I believe they were. I know they were in the, the Park Railway was in, they replaced a whole bunch of door closers or the arms on the door closers. And I believe they're all working. I did not get any specifics from ONG that they, they were 100% complete. I know at one point they said they had to come back and do, there were still a few hanging. I did not get any confirmation that those were completed. So I think at this point, that, as far as the door closers, is pretty much under control. There might be one or two they still have left, but I think the vast bulk of them have been completed.
And these are the redesigned door closer from S. Adelé that alright, and so at our next meeting, since I don't have ONG online for some reason tonight, at our next meeting, which is only a week from today, what I would like to do, Wayne, is prior to that meeting, you and I, you know, we need to send an email out after this back to ONG. Based on them saying they wanted to be done with the punch list by the end of April, the way I'm looking at it is they got a couple of days this week. What I would like to do is to review that punch list at our next meeting, line by line with ONG on the, during the meeting. And we'll see where we stand. So if they have items they want you to clear between now and then, we'll go ahead and do that. And we'll indicate if there's items that you have not verified, but they think are, are done at that point at our next meeting. I'd also like to get a copy of that out to SPA. If they're not already on that distribution, just to validate that we're all on the same punch list there as to where we're going. So we'll be able to review that at our next meeting. Alright, anything else, Wayne, on your report on the middle school?
Nope, I will go over to both schools Monday and go through the punch list as best I can to see if I, what I can update myself.
Okay, in this case now for the committee, I don't have an ONG rep on. I want to mention a few things about items, Roman numeral five. And this is items three through eight. These are all change orders that are kind of historical change orders. They're, for the most part, some negative change orders on allowances and things, but I do want ONG to explain those to the committee. And particularly number seven, this is actually, if you look at the detail inside there, this is for work back that was done in 2020, when we added in the extra work for the for the safe rooms. We also did the extra exterior work, the, the wall and the parking lot and things like that for ONG, because they were beyond the there was additional supervision needed for work that we were adding into the contract at that point. But I want that explained to the committee by ONG. I looked at it myself and I understand all of it, but I do want them to have that. And also for them to explain the GMP allowances, even though they're negative change orders and we're getting money back, so to speak. Or let me rephrase that. We're not getting money back. We're not spending as much money. I still want ONG to explain that. So unless a committee member has any issues, my plan is to table Roman numeral five, item motions four, five, six, seven, and eight. Do I have anyone that wants to discuss those and further, or really wants to vote on them without ONG here? Okay, with that, Lisa, correct me, to table those, I don't need a motion to table them, correct?
No, we can just table them.
Okay, thank you. Alright, with that, I'm gonna move on. Now I've got two Silver Petrocelli and Associate invoices here to pay. The first one is item 10 on your agenda. That is AIA Application 21-470 for Silver Petrocelli Associates, an amount of $2,426.50. That invoice is in order and I move that we make payment.
I'll second that.
That's seconded by Mr. Tominsky. I just want to point out that that's for the Gallup Hill School. And is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor approve the invoice, but signify by saying your name and I. Steve Jessica, it's I.
It's Missy, I.
Better, I.
Kate, Topama Herb, I.
Okay, with that, the eyes have it, and the motion, the invoice is approved. Next, we have Silver Petrocelli and Associates invoice for the later middle school dated 1 March 2021. Invoice Applicate, AIA Application 20-474, and the amount of $1,130.50. Just as a reminder to the committee, at this point, we're on a timely materials contract with SPA. And that invoice is also in order, and I move that we make payment.
I'll second that.
Excuse me, Steve, what, I'm sorry, Steve, excuse me. You had said 20-474. It's actually 21-474.
Well, my, my gen online says 20. Let me just pull that up again. You're right, I'm looking at the final document that the G 703, it's 21-474. Thank you, Lisa. So a friendly amendment to the motion is Applicate, AIA Application 21-474, per the backup and documentation. Note is, the link just has a different number on it, my apologies. In the amount of $1,130.50, is that an acceptable friendly amendment, Mr. Tominsky?
Yes, if you look at the, Lisa, you have it there, I think in the underlined section of 20.
The link's incorrect, but the actual motion's correct.
Okay.
And the documentation says 474. So with that, if that's good with you, Mr. Tominsky, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor approve the invoice, signify by saying your name and I. Steve Jessica, it's I.
You're to miss here.
Very Schneider, I.
Kate, Topama Herb, I.
Okay, with that, the eyes have it, and that motion is approved. Dean, since you're online, item number 12 and 13, the way I believe I've read these is that we've gone back and we believe that these invoices have in fact been paid. And I don't know if you had a chance to go through the, the documentation that's attached to our agenda. But we've got listed here the confirmation that those payments were made and the dates. Does that match what Silver Petrocelli has?
Let me check with our business manager, and I'll send you an email to confirm that, Steve.
Okay, please. And include Lisa, who was on the email sending you the invitation, so she can make, document that. We think that we did a little bit of exhaustive research back with our finance department. We think that those have been paid. Okay. But we'll just double check that and we'll continue on.
Very good, thank you.
Alright, before I move on to Roman numeral number six, are there any comments by, or anything that, I think, we can't add anything to the agenda? Any comments related to anything that we just discussed by any of the committee members? Before we move on to Roman numeral number six.
Steve, yes, I think in general, it's great they're asking Dean to go up the food chain and ONG. I think we should start getting the town attorney involved with, and I know we can't talk about it now, it could be probably better in executive session. But it's getting to the point that ONG is just blowing us off. They're doing three schools in Groton and how many others? So they're getting Dan could be getting pulled. It's, it's maybe more in Groton than here, but this has gone on too long. There's a point in time where the, the AIA contract rules and that we may have some damages that we have to discuss.
Yeah, the, one, one of the issues on damages that we have to look at is, I know that if we had lack of use of the buildings, you know, I had some discussions already with a few folks on this. Lack of use of the buildings and things are one thing. Frustration with how long it takes to correct punch list items is another item, so we have to kind of balance all that. But what bothers me the most, I think, is that because ONG has trades, in some cases, the same trades. Not always, but in a few cases, the same trades working other projects in Eastern Connecticut. They have what I consider to be reasonable leverage, in that since ONG actually is the holder of each of those contracts. They can withhold payment on a contract for a rotten school, because the vendor has not done the work on the Ledger School. And, and plus, not only that, but their influence in future work and things. So I am disappointed in that some of these things are so pesky and so minor. I still just do not understand why ONG just didn't self perform to fix those things themselves.
I agree with, I'll put my two cents, and I agree with Garrett. I think that after Silver Petrocelli has a friendly conversation with the upper ranks of that, let's see where this comes out. But I think we ought to send them a, a nasty letter from a lawyer to begin with to say, we're concerned.
And their, their comments on what they were planning to accomplish by the end of April, when they have failed to meet that you know, even though it was, you know, in emails and, and phone calls and things where they, they made those statements. Nonetheless, they're, they're not showing the good faith in that, so.
We've been, we've been on those punch lists for months, that nothing gets accomplished. And we talk about these same things over and over and over.
I agree with you, Jerry, that I think our next step would be a letter from the town attorney to, to ONG. And I think you know, the, the reason I asked the architect to make that phone call on our behalf is, you know, they still have they, they designed the building, and when, when you design a building and then it's not built the way it's supposed to be built, you know, some, you know, they have to fight to not have some of that shadow cast on them. So I think it's, and I appreciate them making that call as well. The, the, the number of issues that, and responsiveness we've had from the design team on this has been much, much you know, light years better than we've had in the last year and a half with ONG. So.
And if you folks don't oppose, I'm gonna likely, you know, use some strong language and let them know that if, if we don't see immediate, or if you don't see immediate action, that you are considering discussing this with the town attorney. So if you don't mind me using that as a little more leverage, hopefully that'll wake them up.
Understand that, because in the end, we're at the point where the you know, and this is why I'm so hesitant over the last few months to make any, to do any change orders that are new. It's one thing to close out a change order we asked for in the past or something, but every time we do a new change order, we we, we, we extend the pain of this process of closing out the building. And that's why, for example, those roof access, you know, devices that are like ladders that go over the ventilation on the roof. You know, we want to do those outside the contract with ONG, because we don't want another change order to continue this process. We may be able to save a few bucks as well by doing it outside this contract. So I appreciate you making that call, Dean, and we will I'll be speaking to the mayor, because this is an executive action by the town, because it's contractual. The mayor signs letters, not the town council. So, you know, I have had a discussion with the mayor and the chairman of the town council. And I'll be following up with the mayor on, on where we go forward with that. And again, these are, in some cases, really pesky little things that are more of a nuisance. And we've spent more time and energy working on something simple than, than it should ever take. So I think we beat that to death. Alright, with that, I've got, moving on to Roman numeral number six. Leonard High School Track and Field Project, the only thing I have an update on that is to let you know that that is with Town Finance Committee. Councilor Marshall, do you have anything further on that that you can share with us from Town Council perspective on how that's been reviewed, or do you know any status?
I have, I get this, nothing at this time, Steve, I'm sorry.
Are, are you on finance?
No.
Okay, I wasn't sure. I know Finance Committee has that. I believe Counselor Psoms is the chair of finance, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I haven't had anything back from him. I know Finance meant I was out of town. I thought they had everything they needed for that. We're getting into the season soon where, and we're, hopefully they'll give us the go ahead to move forward with the rest of that fencing replacement. And potentially the scoreboard as well.
Yeah, I believe they have full support. It just doesn't come default to the, to the council yet.
Understand, we look forward to getting that work done. I drove by that again the other day, and it's, it definitely, the, you know, the fence. There was some discussion, I know about painting that fence instead of replacing it, but I, I would encourage anyone that's on this particular Zoom call or watches it later in video to drive by that fence, and you'll quickly see that it, it is in disrepair. And it, it, it just needs to be replaced as opposed to being painted.
Yeah.
I'm hoping the black vinyl will, will help. Alright, with that, if there is nothing else, which it is a special meeting. So at our meeting on the 5th of May, just for everybody, what I anticipate happening is a complete review of the remaining punch list.
May 3rd, Steve.
I'm sorry, May 3rd, my apologies. Thank you. Which is a week from today. I anticipate reviewing that punch list, seeing where ONG stands on their promise of the end of April. We, and, and Wayne, take a look at the dollar amounts that they have on there. I'm gonna take a look at them as well, to see where we stand with that. Hopefully by then, we will have felt a little bit of the reverberations from some phone calls back up to the folks at ONG to get this closed out. And we will, at that point, be able to vote on the draft RFPQ to send that off to finance, to fill in the remaining blanks on dates and things. And we'll be able to get that out. We have to publish that. And hopefully we'll get some good bids on that. So if there are any questions. And by the way, if anyone out there that received a copy of the draft RFPQ wants to edit that in Microsoft Word with, you know, track changes, and you got questions, please send those back to me. I can review those before our next meeting and try to get them back out to the committee. I do appreciate your review of that. It is similar to the RFPQ that we used in the past on one or two of our bids. I think it's comprehensive enough to get what we want. And I don't want to even speculate on the cost, because I don't want to influence any bids, but I think it will be money well spent.
Steve, I did notice one thing I remembered quickly. Um, I don't know, you don't have the pages, so it's kind of towards the end, but where you have the town website, that domain is no longer. We actually just got an email from MIS last week. So it used to be town-ledger.CT.us. That domain actually went away two years ago.
Yeah.
C.T. org, so they just, they just did, got away with, they just got rid of that C.T. dot U.S. dot. So I have gotten so many calls that our website's down, but they're all using the old one.
In fact, when you go, when you go to Google, it takes you there at first, but I, I thought I highlighted that for the town Finance Director to update when she has the right folder for where the bids go.
Okay.
And on this one, Wayne, this will be open in the finance office. The mayor's gonna sign the contract, so that works out well. One last thing for you to have to worry about. And hopefully we'll get a couple of bids, but there's a bunch of places where you see a row of Xs, or you see it highlighted, where we have to update that in the RFP before it goes out. And then, in addition, Wayne, the only thing we'll be asking you to help us with is getting it published on the state website where you publish your bids. And then we'll advertise it. Um and then we'll advertise it in the day like we have to. Um and like I said, there are a few uh organizations that do that kind of work. I did ask um uh and 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 Dean, I'm not sure if I had asked O and uh O and G or SPA on this, but if you happen to know of firms that do that type of um work as far as uh what this RFP is about, is about assembling the entire body of everything related, all the meeting minutes over the last five years, all the change or documentation, getting stuff from you guys, O and G, the town, assembling it together in a, in a, in a, on a C D or DVD for each school with a uh organized table of contents that you can click on, see all the documents and that they use the state uh audit guideline memo as the basis for that and make sure we have everything in order. We, as Lisa just mentioned, we changed out the town's MIS system. Um we did a whole bunch of stuff where you know, getting all the copies of all the bids and the bid sheets and the proposals that came in that are in filing cabinets in some places, other places, they're on the land. Getting all that assembled is a big job. Um and what is your experience with towns uh? You know, are we still seeing a five to six year uh window to get projects audited?
Uh easily, Steve. We, we have some projects. I have some projects that are 10 and 12 years old that haven't been audited yet. So um I think um they were behind and then COVID is, is putting them behind even further. They're, they're surely not making uh the audits a priority anymore as they're all scattered and working from home. They're not as structured as they used to be, but um I mean, there are some days we wonder when they're going to even stop the audit process because it's that far backed up. Um and you folks are pretty progressive in your thinking. Um I, I, I don't know of any other town who's thinking like you do. Normally they scramble at the last minute. And as you can imagine, 12 or 15 years later, as some of these audits are occurring, there's often nobody left to pick up the pieces. Um so hats off to you guys, but it definitely is not very common of what you're looking to do. I'm not going to say that you won't get any response from the RFP, but you are, it is not the norm. Uh most municipalities opt to just wait and deal with it whenever it, whenever it comes.
I appreciate, I appreciate your comments on that, Dean. And again, if you happen to know of firms that do that, I did look at some of the uh construction management oversight firms that advertise in the state to, you know, throughout the entire project. Uh we'll see what we get. And I know Wayne indicated he knew some people that had experience in this.
It'll likely be a C M, Steve, but uh let me uh, let me do a little digging here around and I'll talk to some of the other project managers here. I'm uh I'm sure we're going to come up with a list that's uh mostly PMs, but uh I'll, I'll send anything along that I find.
I appreciate that. Uh last question for you, Dean, is what's that blue bottle of liquid on top of the coffee behind you?
Um it's windshield washer fluid, Steve.
Okay, don't make the coffee with that. Um I was just uh, I've been looking at that during this. I wasn't sure if it was like fruit punch or something back there.
It'll stain more than the windows.
There you go. There you go. Perfect. All right. Uh if nobody has anything else, we're going to go ahead and uh adjourn this meeting. Uh I move we adjourn.
Second.
Okay, it's been seconded. All in favor?
I.
All right, meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Have a great night.
Have a good night.
Good night.